I'm not gonna miss it. Set it right. I might get to see my Savior in there where it works. And my Savior network, I'll say. Can I get that report? Uh, I think that report. Let me see, I made me that the plan is just my people.
Mary, the work place won't be behind something.
Wouldn't be the first time. No, I'm still getting mine. I'm gonna make new pictures. Feel my own. So, I did what it does.
That's my Christmas tree. Today, they know today's the day of the library closes. So your computer's shut down. Are you gonna go to work here this time?
Yeah.
How was your district?
Uh.
How was your district? Today might be chaos.
Oh, well. That is, I got it.
Yes. Yeah, I got agenda for this meeting and workshop and letter. Unless they change it, there's supposed to be a workshop at the left. Right. I will not be here if you let me. Okay, about God, you can download with them. They sent me the agenda on Friday.
Afternoon.
Friday. Friday. Friday.
Mr. King, Mr. King? Yeah. And she went there. She had a, anybody take care of them? The Mary Lou ended that.
There are.
Mary Lou and that. Can't figure us for surely we both stick together. Yeah. Get ready to have a good season. Correct me. And I don't tell you much, but I'll tell you all that. Okay. I'm thinking some of you. I'll be afraid I must.
Good Lord.
All right, you actually have work. Some of it is missing. Oh, okay. Well. Where are you downstairs? I'll be downstairs. I'll do a place up, but I'll be. Absolutely. Well, worry.
There you go.
Good, happy day. One last. Do the main part, get up here on top. You gotta help. If you're on top, you're late, huh? Do not look me out of that.
So you're going to your form.
Please. There's. We need to. I want that. That is probably eighty-five. Never. So sorry. Thank you. You did. Oh, yeah. One good morning. The morning. Well, first thing, then I was talking.
There you go. But there you go.
There's room for him. Want to move? You gotta keep that in mind. That's how we get it. You gotta yell and ignore. Because it's like, no. I think, but I'm not. It's all I told you. But I can't remember very well. You know, sneak up.
I'm sorry.
Check back. We're running sometimes.
You got a poor market.
Oh, no, people. None of that stuff. Yes, I've had a time.
Yeah, that's better.
Thank you. Start over.
Do I?
Yeah, honestly, and that's why I'm asking. But I haven't seen this one. When you sleep, you finish the night. I'm. The chair is like. And the little chair, they didn't. Sure. That's the impossible head. That's what I'm trying to eat. Obviously, uh, the value of the. I'll be. Thank you. Pretty. Well. I'm working. Do you?
Well, generally, you're not.
Then it was done.
So, the currency minutes in.
It can find one. If they're finding that we're here, we're checking.
Not.
Just checking on. They can email me straight after.
More than due to.
And it's for you. It says the words to the short. We try to work on.
We ready? It is nine o'clock. Would you please stand off of the indication this morning? Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. Father, we thank you for this time of year where we get to celebrate the birth of the Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Father, we thank you for the jobs that you have provided for us here at the county and for the people in the county. Father, we just pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance in the decisions that we make, that they would be for the best interest. And so in your son's precious name, we pray, amen. Pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge to the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you, you made me see this. All right. Meeting will come to order at nine oh two. And then we do have a forum. Commissioner Barton is not with us today and, but the other commissioners are. So are there any general announcements? Do you have any general announcements? All right, none. Public comments, we have two public comments. We will start off with Ronnie Jones to speak about items two, three, five, six, seven, and eight. And Ronnie, you have five minutes.
You have to excuse me, I didn't know we had two meetings, one at nine and one at eleven. So some of that's kind of mixed in there. Basically, the second one is a special meeting, workshop, another special meeting where y'all didn't discuss everything behind closed doors you wanted to. So you're gonna get an opportunity to do it again. The funds, what you already approved. And that has to do with the, I don't know what number that is. Approval of the warehouse as well as point. That was approved, item number eighteen of December the sixth. Agenda item. And that was approved to lease the building. Now, this was gonna be to fund the building is the way I'm reading it. But if y'all had spent the time, you wouldn't have had to had a special meeting. And that's kind of true of all of these. And I had five, six, seven, and eight. These are agenda items that you need to cover. Five is the election. Uh. That's for precinct two, district two. Election. Which allows you to have that election. And you have to do that. I'm aware of that. But those people also will be running March the fifth. Is that gonna be in the discussion today? Typically, no. That's already resolved. That's the way you do it. For raises for indigent care for lawyers, I got two point nine eight percent increase in my social security. If you do give an increase, surely you're not gonna go above two point nine eight percent, which is what the common people get. But I'm sure you're looking at bigger figures than that. That was item number seven. Number eight, expenses related to the lease of the building. I've already covered that. It, it just seems like we're rushing to hurry up and get nothing done. We have to have other meetings to be sure we cover everything you need to cover. That's what we've got chief on. Not taxpayers getting up at eight o'clock in the morning. Seven o'clock in order to be here by nine o'clock. That's all I hope to say.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next we have Sandra Jones to speak on. Uh, public comments.
In the last commissioner's court meeting, December sixth, twenty twenty-three, when you had closed the public comments, the time to speak. Then after several other items had been discussed, you allowed three people to speak. I'm not even sure if those people had signed up to speak or not, and were supposed to sign up to be able to speak at that particular time. Then you've been giving your response to those questions. You can't have it both ways, Judge. One week do it this way, and another week do it another. Some people would call that favoritism. I don't. I call it preferential treatment. A judge is supposed to be unbiased, impartial, and above all, fair. You need to think about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. All right, that's all the public comments that we have on agenda. Next, item number four, consent agenda. These items are considered routine. The commissioner's court will be enacted by one motion. Uh, there will be separate discussion on items unless there will be no separate discussion unless the county judge or commission request item be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Do any items need to be discussed or removed? If not, is there a motion to?
Well, I was giving them an opportunity. Uh, yes, sir, I'd like to move A and D.
Okay. Would you like to discuss item A right now?
Yes, sir, I'd like to table A. There was a computer mess up and those minutes were not in the binder. So I would like to table A.
All right. Is there a motion to table?
That's a motion, yes.
Is there a second? Second. All right, second by Commissioner Melton. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. And item number B, I wanted to.
Number D?
D.
I would just like to make a comment because Pearson is always real good about calling out when we do not have the reports we're supposed to have. I would not be fair to the people if I didn't call out that we have got all of our reports for October, November. So thank you to all the people that are responsible for those reports.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the remaining items of the consent agenda?
So.
So, all right, motion has been made and stated, did you get those? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss to approve the notice of order of election for the January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, special runoff election for state representative district two unexpired term. Shannon? You wanna, you wanna just tell us what we're doing here?
The notice in order of election is something that is required before a real election. Um. We have to have that notice posted thirty days prior to the election, so that's why it's on this agenda this week. We just need. Uh, we're having an election in November, or January thirtieth for the runoff election for the state representative. Uh, there's going to be two people on the ballot that will be Jill Dutton and Brent Manning. The only voting as on the notice is going to be January twenty-second through the twenty-sixth at the library from seven AM to seven PM every day.
Okay.
And we will be opening all eighteen of our local polling locations.
Any questions for Shannon? Now, is there a motion to approve the order of election? Only. All right, motion by Commissioner Loprad, is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I've not, so you understand what we're doing. We have to do this one thirty days before January the thirtieth. Then we'll come back later on, Mr. Jones, and we'll approve the election for the, for the March prime. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss to consider approving purchasing a used vehicle for Roden Bridge Precinct Four.
Yeah, that's, that's actually Commissioner Martin, he agreed to handle this for him. He, he's, uh, want permission to, to purchase this vehicle as he needs a patch truck. And, uh. So I make a motion that we approve the purchase of this used vehicle for Roden Bridge Precinct Four.
All right, motion, what motion has been made, is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right, further discussion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to explain once again to the, to the people that are on the YouTube and listening here, we do our best as Roden Bridge Commissioners whenever we're building our budgets to put in there what we're gonna buy. Uh, you'll remember last time, two, the two cords, I've come to the court. We do that just for transparency, so y'all will know what we're doing. Because when we're building our budgets, we have workshops that gives the public an opportunity to come see us and, and join in with those. And then we have hearings on our budgets. This, this stuff, this, what Mr. Barton is doing and what I did, uh, the last two times we met was not in those budget workshops. And so we don't want, uh, the people to think, well, they should have had that in the workshop. If we'd known we needed a truck at that time, I promise you, they would have been there. And so to, to offset that is why we come back. It's kind of redundant and a lot of people may think, well, that's their, it's in their, their budget, they have the money to do it, why are they coming and taking up our time? We're doing it so the people know what we're doing. So I just want to explain that.
Okay. So, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss to consider increasing the hourly rate for attorneys working indigent legal aid, juvenile, and mental health cases in Van Zant County. And this fits right into what you were saying, Commissioner Pearson, having to do with transparency. I, I discussed, for those who don't know, indigent legal aid is what we are required to provide attorney. Miranda Wright says that you're allowed an attorney. If you can't afford a attorney, one will be appointed for you, and the county pays for that attorney. And, uh, we use those attorneys for civil, for criminal cases. And in my, my court, we use them for juvenile and to represent juvenile and for mental health. And, uh, the current rate is sixty dollars an hour for the legal representation for all of the cases that we provide. Uh, the best I can tell, that rate was set twenty to twenty-five years ago, maybe even thirty years ago, and has not increased in this amount of time. Currently, the amount that, that hourly rate that is paid by Henderson County is a hundred dollars an hour. Currently, Coffin County is a hundred dollars an hour. Most, every county around us is paying a hundred dollars an hour. Consequently, uh, we have trouble finding lawyers to represent our, uh, our people uh, because of the hourly rate. And, uh, I met with Judge Martin, and, uh, and this, this decision is really made by the, the judges. And I met with Judge Martin during budgeting time to discuss, you know, increasing the rate. And we went through all the numbers to figure out if that was possible and what we could do. And that's what we budgeted, it was actually for an increase of seventy-five dollars to seventy-five dollars an hour. However, we haven't implemented it yet because many of the attorneys, especially in the CPS cases, do not turn in their billing until the very end of our fiscal year in September. And so we get a big block of billings during that month and, and pay it off. And we wanted to see where we were at, at the end of the fiscal year before we actually implemented the increase. And, uh, and for those of you who don't know, the total amount of indigent legal aid that we paid in our last fiscal year before the audit is, um. That's. Five hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars and three hundred and fifty-six, oh, five hundred, about sixty-seven. Five hundred thousand, six hundred, six. I'll get it right, okay? Five hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That was for all the legal representation. That includes, uh, set fees that we pay for certain things, uh, in, in, in trials and other things that, in addition to. But the majority of the, um, uh, hourly rate constituted about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, and my, and our budget for, uh, this new year is set at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So with the increase to seventy-five dollars an hour from sixty dollars an hour, that's going to make our budget, or that's, that's an estimated three hundred thousand dollars that, that we would have to pay. And our budget is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're well within that. If we went to eighty dollars an hour, that would be three hundred and twenty thousand. Basically, every five dollar increment was another twenty thousand based on four thousand hours. Now, so there's enough we were, we're gonna be in our budget. Uh, I believe. So, uh, I'm presenting this to you, I don't know that the commissioners need to approve it, but if, if you want to, that's fine. Uh, but it's, it's really up to the, uh, the judges who have, uh, set these budget amounts in the budget. And like Keith said, I want to be transparent, want you to understand why these lawyers have been working sixty dollars an hour when they get a hundred at all our surrounding county, most of our surrounding counties. So it's time for us to raise that and it'll make it easier for us to get attorneys in uh, attorneys and lawyers for the uh, different, so. Any discussion?
So, just to clarify. The district does a county court law judge. I guess you're, you're part of.
Right.
Y'all actually set that hourly rate. We're just being informed it's within the budget.
That is, that is correct. I just want to let y'all know, as Keith was saying, the transparency so that the community, the voters and taxpayers and will know, understand why we're increasing uh, in that regard. So, if there's no, there's real no action required, if there's no further discussion, I will move on to the next item. Any further discussion? All right, item number eight, discuss to consider funding of lease and expenses related to the lease of the building of Will's Point for the use in the radio project. And there is a uh, summary spreadsheet that we, we sent out. It's been updated. Uh, but we didn't get the update into the binder. Uh, basically, we added, added a camera, correct, to the uh?
Yes, we had one more camera to the exterior in the blackout.
Now, what we are doing here is we approved the lease, which is two thousand dollars a year, a month, a month, a year. Uh, for the Will's Point facility. And this lease is, the building is going to be used for the staging area for our uh, radio project for all the equipment that's going to be delivered until it goes to the towers or uh, radios are installed in vehicles. And this is a facility that's going to be done. There are associated costs with the facility which were not discussed prior and need to be addressed at this point in time. And those costs will include as part of the lease, electricity, natural gas, water. Uh, those are the items that we will be paying to the city of Will's Point uh, for, for those services. And then we will need to install an alarm system uh, which is nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then a video surveillance system, which is four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which I would like to add that we will own the cameras, we will own all that equipment and can reuse it when we're done with the lease. So it's not, uh, the only thing that will be out is really the installation cost to, to install it, which is seven hundred dollars. And what uh, what the auditor needs to know is how, what funds are we going to be using to pay for these items? And are we going to use ARPA funds? Are we going to use the interest account? So those, that is the uh, workup for this particular line item.
We'll need to use our interest funds for this. Okay, the fund is, and I'll explain to the court. The reason this wasn't addressed when we originally leased the building was on the alarm system, video system. We've got to put this in the building, but this is a a very high dollar value amount of equipment going in the building. We need a security system and camera system to cover that. I didn't discuss in the original project, because until the court says, yes, we're using this building, I couldn't really go out and pull in the security companies and camera companies and have them come look at the building and go view and give us pricing. I need to know exactly what building I was using, because we had three different buildings to choose from. And that's why we waited till now to come back and address this, Mr. Jones, to follow up with this. Uh, I'll make a motion to the effect that we fund these expenses through our interest fund.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Uh, virtual second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
My only discussion, I, I'm my, my only issue in, in this whole thing is uh, uh, the, the security stuff. I'm good at, at paying for it out of ARPA funds. But did we get bids on this security stuff from other companies to make sure we're getting the best deal on the, on the security, on the cameras and everything?
We utilize the companies that the county is currently using for its other services. So we just went to them and asked to add this up.
We, we'd use more than one company. So that's, that's my own problem. Uh, we, we have, we have three local, in Will's Point, we have three local security companies and and I just felt like, wouldn't, who knows, we might save a thousand dollars or so if we, if we bid that out. I know we don't have to, I understand it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but my opinion, we should always go with what we can get, or the same stuff, or at the, at the lowest price.
So we, we just approved the one with Onstar at the last meeting, so we reached out to utilize this, kind of had a contract with them, we just approved it. That's, we reached out.
Well, I understand, we got, but we got a contract with Carol Warren too, and that's all I'm saying, Chad, is we.
I understand you're going to say.
Uh, is we. That, that's a it's quite a bit of money that we might be able to save some money there.
Is there a reason we're taking it out of interest instead of ARPA?
The interest funds is, the ARPA funds, we have to draw the federal hoops on the interest, we have more discretion to utilize. And when we laid out the, the funding plans and set up the way we was doing the POs, this would fall underneath the interest side.
Okay.
Yes, I wouldn't want to take it out of ARPA. Then, then we've got to get our, our
Grant.
Grant people involved, and that's just going to cost us more money. And all the ARPA money is, is pretty much aligned out on those radios. So I, I, I agree with Chad that ARPA interest is the way to go.
Well, Keith, would you, you like to make a motion to approve this using uh, ARPA interest funds and that we get a bid from Carol?
Well, we can discuss, we probably can't legally discuss that now, because it's not on the agenda to discuss. That, I just wanted to throw that out there. We, we can still approve the, how we're going to finance whoever we go with.
Okay. So somebody make that motion?
We got a motion.
Yeah, we're not to vote for the way we did.
Okay, that's right, all right. So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. All right. We will now go into um, we will end our, our regular session and go into a closed executive session in compliance with section five five one.
Before you do that, if you want to go ahead and move the bills up and cover that.
Oh, yes, why don't we do that? I'm sorry. Well, that was actually ratified, okay. Uh, let's go to item number eleven. Uh, is there a motion to approve the county bills for payment as submitted?
Don't move, Pearson.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for telling me, for reminding me that. And again, the reason, the reason that was moved out of the consent agenda down to the bottom, because it had to do with the purchase of the used vehicle, which is in those bills, and we couldn't very well approve the purchase or approve the invoice before we'd approved the purchase. So now we will go into closed executive session. We end the regular meeting at nine twenty-five. And uh, I will finish it up. Uh, in compliance with section five five one point zero seven two, the Texas Commercial Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. So, thank y'all very much for attending. Guys, Keith, uh,
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. I'll do it, thank you.
Merry Christmas.